Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Deborah Ingram is here from Epworth United Methodist Church where she is a pastor. She'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pettis if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Maker of all that is and all that will ever be, we give you respect and acknowledge you as our Creator and Provider. We come before you to welcome you to this meeting. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together this day. As we begin this morning, we ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that our meeting is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Grant that each of us may feel our responsibility to our city. Make each of us an instrument of your peace. Weave us into a community showing forth your mercy. Guide us to seek the good for all the people over whom we have been set to govern. Help us to accomplish our tasks while displaying your character. Amen.
Amen.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this is a day I've been dreading for quite some time. This is the last council meeting for Councilman Pat Ryan. Let's show our appreciation for that. This has been, uh, this has been quite a run. Uh, I mean, Pat gave generously of his time and on a community basis while he was, um, working full-time largely with O G and E, but he had other endeavors throughout his career. And upon retirement, then he really went to work. He, um, he put his name on a ballot for city council, uh, won, and I guess, gosh, that's been 10 years now, right, Pat? Well, um, as you would expect, we have a citation. I'm gonna ask the clerk to read it.
Well, as Patrick J. Ryan began his city council service on April 12th, 2005, following a 36-year career at Oklahoma Gas and Electric, where he served as vice chairman. Whereas Pat's private sector experience included serving as owner of Pro Flight Aviation Services, CEO of Laser Eye Network, Inc., and as a consultant to St. Anthony Hospital. Whereas Pat served as a board member for several local companies, nonprofits, and industry organizations, including president of the Oklahoma City Philharmonic Society, campaign chairman of Allied Arts Foundation, president of the St. Anthony Hospital Foundation, and chairman of the Board of the United Way of Metro Oklahoma City. Whereas Pat is a registered professional engineer with a Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering from the University of Oklahoma. Whereas as city councilman of Ward Eight, Pat drew on his considerable business experience, his engineer's analytical eye, and his community involvement as he considered issues before council. His many accomplishments as a councilman, chairing the Economic Development Trust, Water Utilities Trust, the Sports Facilities Oversight Committee, and O M L Board of Directors, among others, helped guide Oklahoma City's development and remarkable growth over the past decade. Whereas with more than a decade of service to our community as the city councilman, Pat played an instrumental role in improving the quality of life for our citizens, including the creation of thousands of jobs through economic, retail, and commercial development throughout the city, the development of the myriad gardens, public-private partnership, and the Parks Master Plan, management and oversight of the city's sports facilities, expansion of city water services, and the redevelopment of the Oklahoma River. Whereas as steward of public trust and champion of fiscal responsibility, Pat served as a tenacious watchdog for citizen tax dollars, especially in the areas of workers' comp and information technology. Whereas Pat chose not to run for reelection in 2015 and is looking forward to spending time with his lovely wife, Grace. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, hereby thanks and commends Patrick J. Ryan for his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of Ward Eight and the city of Oklahoma City and wishes him all the best.
How about another round of applause? And, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, I'm gonna ask Councilman White to come down as well. Uh, Councilman White is chairman of the Water Trust and Pat has served diligently on the Water Trust as well. Pete?
Thank you. Uh, we have a writ, you know, I understand you're not gonna be here this afternoon for the final go-around on the Water Trust, but, uh, but...
I mean, the Water Trust is important.
The, uh, we have a resolution that we're gonna pass this afternoon, and I'd ask the clerk to read it for me.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust is a public trust created under Title 60 of the Oklahoma Statutes 1960 for the primary purpose of financing the construction, installation, maintenance, improvement, and repair of the water sources of supply, plants, facilities, water distribution, and collection systems for the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City is the sole beneficiary of the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust, and the city of Oklahoma City owns and operates municipal reservoirs, reservations, and public water supply systems to provide potable water. Whereas Pat Ryan has served as surrogate trustee of the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust since June 1st, 2005. Whereas major capital improvement projects bettering water and wastewater service in Oklahoma City were completed under his guidance, including expansion of the Headner Water Treatment Plant and Chisholm Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, construction of more than 70 miles of water transmission mains and sewer interceptors, and several service extension improvements logically developing large portions of Ward Eight. Whereas Mr. Ryan was instrumental in the development of AquaWatt's Commercial Paper Program, saving the citizens of Oklahoma City and the trust millions of dollars in avoided interest payments. Whereas since the program's inception on August 1st, 2006, the trust has sold 284 million 500,000, and all but 3 million has been refunded, enabling faster prosecution of the capital improvement plan. Whereas Mr. Ryan has been an ambassador for the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust, helping to build partnerships with the McGee Creek Authority and the Laketoka Reservation Association in southeastern Oklahoma. Now therefore, be it resolved by the trustees of the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust that they do hereby gratefully recognize the contributions of Pat Ryan for his leadership, dedication, and guidance during his 10 years of loyal service to the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust.
Everybody that in Oklahoma City has benefited greatly by your service on the Water Trust. It's been, uh, this has been a very interesting 10 years with, I could go into detail about some of the things that made it interesting. Um, some of them are not a lot of fun, but, uh, but, uh, it's been a very interesting 10 years, and I appreciate so much what you've done. Your, your presence, um, with your background in utility, uh, management has been invaluable to the trust. It's been, your insight, your ability to look at things from a pure utility standpoint has been something we, we, it'll be very difficult to replace that. I appreciate you so much. Appreciate it. I would add one thing that about a couple of years ago, the mayor gave me a, uh, a birthday card, and on it it said, "Pete, happy birthday. I appreciate all you do," and then he worked, he crossed out the word "all" and he put "most" of what you did. And it, I, I, it is, I love it. It's framed, it's on my wall, 'cause it's so much, I think exemplifies the kind of relationship that, uh, people that care about Oklahoma City but might once in a while have differing views about things. Um, and, and I, if I had, if this was your birthday, I'd have brought your birthday. I appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. And I want to thank, uh, my predecessors on the Water Trust for making this such an easy job, uh, the work they did years and years ago with the Otoka Pipeline, Laketoka, just really made, uh, a vast difference in Oklahoma's, uh, position in terms of water supply, and I think, I really thank you for what you all did at that time. It was an easy job to do, and I just like, all the nice things are said this morning, which my mother was still alive, she would believe most of these things. Now, my father would know better, 'cause he just, he always figured I was a waste troll and wasn't waiting to do anything anyway. So, anyway, Mick, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. I want to thank all the people who elected me, gave me the opportunity to serve as Ward Eight. I've had, all the people thanked me and they get it all wrong. They shouldn't thank me. I should be thanking them for giving me the opportunity to do this. And I want to say one more time, I've said this before, that these citizens of Oklahoma City are really lucky to have the kind of administration and people in city service that they have. They're getting a real bargain for what they, 'cause the people here are outstanding and they're committed to doing a good job for our citizens, and I, I think, uh, it's a really important difference in Oklahoma City that we have here. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and I really appreciate it, Mick. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been great. It is also National Service Recognition Day, and we have several groups that have gathered here this morning. I'm just gonna have them all come up here and then, uh, we'll, we'll read off a proclamation. Let's see, we have Sunbeam Family Services, the Corporation for National and Community Service, Oklahoma Community Services Commission, R S V P of Central Oklahoma, Variety Care, and Regional Food Bank. As they're gathering, I'll ask the clerk to read the proclamation.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and is central to how we meet our challenges. Whereas America Corps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to helping communities recover from national, natural disasters. Whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. Whereas National Service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based groups so vital to our economic and social well-being. Local agencies and programs utilizing National Service participants and volunteers to benefit our most vulnerable citizens include some being Family Services, Inc., Senior Companion Program, and Foster Grandparent Program, R S V P of Central Oklahoma, Inc., Variety Care Foster Grandparent Program. Whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in our community's solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. Whereas America Corps members and Senior Corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism for making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim April 7th as National Service Recognition Day in Oklahoma City, and encourages all residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Let's show our appreciation. And I'm gonna introduce Jim Priest with Sunbeam.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to thank, uh, all the representatives here today, as well as the council, and the mayor, and the administration, but especially the volunteers who consistently act as the red blood cells in the bloodstream of volunteer agencies like Sunbeam, the Regional Food Bank, and others throughout the community. It's a great opportunity, we get to work with volunteers, and, uh, we could not do the work without them. We would be anemic without red blood cells, and we would be anemic agencies without the work of volunteers. So, thanks to all our volunteers.
It is also National Poetry Month, and Patty Coke and Trina Lee are here. Why don't you all come up? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996. Whereas National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, introduce Americans to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in immediate and innovative ways, and make poetry an important part of our children's education. National Poetry Month, under the leadership and direction of the Academy of American Poets, is now the largest literary celebration in the world. Whereas poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans, and poetry as an essential part of the arts and humanities affects every aspect of life in America today, including education, the economy, and community pride and development. Whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April as National Poetry Month in Oklahoma City, and urges all citizens to recognize and celebrate the important role of poetry in creating and sustaining this great nation with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs.
Let's show our appreciation. We actually have to vote on this one. I know this is probably not the most controversial vote we'll have today. Probably not, but is it gonna be National Poetry Month or not? So we'll see. Do we have a motion? And a second, cast your votes. How about that? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I want to thank, um, our councilman Larry McAtee. I came to him four years ago to start this, and we've done it every year, and the mayor has always been very gracious about this. I don't know how many of you stop and think about poetry. You probably think, oh, nursery rhymes, or I read them to my children. Poetry is part of our everyday life. Um, you can read it in the, in the newspaper, oh, Buckles, he'll do a haiku. Oh, B C does a, a, a poem every now and again. And don't just think about who, the, the Midnight Ride of Paul Revere. Think about your advertisements in the paper, and think about your commercials on TV. Think about the games when you go to them, the Thunder, or O S U and that other one. Um, can, oh, OU, is that what it is? Okay, I knew there, I knew there was another one. Anyway, listen sometimes, because you'll hear poems there. Um, poetry is just a part of our everyday life, and I challenge everybody, go this week, go this month, and look around and see how much poetry is a part of your life. And we thank you again for letting us be here today, and God bless you.
Let's show our appreciation. And we also today have our employee of the month. So Francisco, you wanna come on up? South Oklahoma City Quanis Club helps us every month honor one employee out of the 4,000 that we have, uh, here in the city of Oklahoma City, and this month's winner is Francisco Manzo. We have a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Francisco Manzo has been a city employee for 16 years and is a system support tech two in Public Safety Communications Radio System Support of the Public Safety Systems Division of the Information Technology Department. Whereas Francisco repairs and maintains mobile and portable radios for police, fire, and other city departments. Francisco has an exceptional knowledge of electronics and radios, and easily explains technical terms to customers in words they can understand. Whereas Francisco has a great work ethic and is a conscientious, productive employee who works diligently to ensure repairs are correctly made and in a timely manner. Whereas Francisco has saved the city thousands of dollars each year by diagnosing problems and repairing radios and other devices in-house instead of sending them back to the retailer. Whereas Francisco never hesitates to help when someone has a problem or needs assistance. He provides quality service and has developed an excellent rapport with his customers, especially police officers. Whereas his council desires to recognize Francisco Manzo for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Francisco Manzo, April 2015, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
And we're gonna have to vote on this one as well, so let's hold our applause and the suspense to see if we can get Francisco his, his Employee of the Month. We have a motion in a second. All right, cast your votes. And it's also unanimous. Now you can show your appreciation. Congratulations, Francisco.
I want to say to thank you to my supervisor, manager, uh, radio shop manager, administration, for all, uh, help they provide to me, and, um, thank you to city council too, to provide all the equipment that we needed to do our job more easy and more efficient, and that's all I can say.
Fabulous. Great work, Francisco. We really appreciate everything you do. Please pass along our appreciation to your coworkers too. Let's show our appreciation one more time. And with that, Julie, you wanna come on up? And, uh, we're, we're gonna start something new today, and we're, every quarter, we're gonna bring in a pet from the Oklahoma City Shelter. And Julie Bank is, runs that shelter for us, and I'm gonna stand up and let you just kinda go away, but I did wanna kinda pet this guy. Will?
He doesn't shed, I promise.
All right. What's his name?
His name is Mighty Mac.
Mighty Mac.
And actually Mighty Mac came into our shelter rescued by our field officers. He was found with his sister Minnie, and they were found in a home that wasn't providing any food, water, shelter, and we were able to come in and rescue him and give him a bath, and he was put in foster care for a couple of weeks, and now he is ready for adoption, and he looks really great with you.
He's actually eyeing the people in this room...
He is.
...to see if there's anybody worthy of taking him home. But Julie, I know he's got some friends over at the shelter, so why don't you tell us more about them, and I'll take my seat up there.
Well, right now, we have over 500 dogs and cats waiting for homes. This is the time of the year that we see so many animals coming in our door, and partly because they're not spayed or neutered. So first of all, I want to encourage everybody to consider spay neutering your pet, because you can really help dramatically the animals in the animal shelter. Um, second of all, these animals all need homes, so we are looking for individuals who'd be interested in adopting Mighty Mac or any of the other animals that we have available for adoption, and the great thing is that you can look at the city website at OKC.gov/animalwelfare, and you can actually see pictures of all the animals that we have available for adoption. So you can actually shop while you're in your PJs in the morning drinking your coffee and look for a new pet. We open at 12 o'clock today for this little guy and for all the other guys, and we are open seven days a week. Again, this is the time of the year that we need lots of help, not only spaying and neutering and adoption, but we need lots and lots of volunteer help. It was service day a minute ago, and, um, you can volunteer to help at the city animal shelter. The volunteers are our lifeblood, and we're really looking for lots of good folks to come out and help us. So there's so many ways that you can get involved in the shelter and to really participate and learn about the work that we do, and we are there to support the animals and the people and their relationship, and that's what we're all about.
Wonderful. So opportunities for volunteerism, also, of course, we're always looking for, for people who are, are looking for a new friend to take home. So, the animal shelter has come a long way, uh, in, in my time here at, at City Hall, and it, it's, it's a beautiful facility, that the people there have a real passion for this area of interest, and as, as you can see how, how adoptable, um, he, he looks today. He probably didn't look that, like that the day he arrived. So, it's wonderful, Julie. Thank you for your work, and please pass along our appreciation to your staff, and hopefully people will see this, and, uh, and if they have time to, to spare, come down and be a volunteer at the Oklahoma Animal Shelter.
We'd love to have you, and we're open today at noon.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. We are on item 3C of the council agenda. I will draw attention, one of the names was misspelled in a typo, and so where it says Kobiel, it should be Gobiel with a G, and the clerk, uh, has informed me I can make that correction verbally, and then we'll take a motion and pass the, the rest of them all at once. Is there a motion?
We're voting on the appointments on 3C.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 4A is to receive the journal from March 31st, and item 4B is to approve the journal from March 24th. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 5 is request for uncontested continuance.
Mayor, you have several this morning, uh, starting on page three on the consent docket, item 7A1, PV 091, and 7A2, PV 092, where I said that be continued until April 14th. Again, that's 7A1 and 2 to April 14th. Moving to page 8, item 9A1, PC 10409, again, item 9A1, PC 10409, where I said that be continued to April 28th. And then on page 10, item 9E2, page 10, 9E2, PUD 1567, number 5, where I said that be continued until April 14th. Then still on page 10 under item 9G1, item D, 2033 Northeast 14th, where I said that be stricken, we need to re-notify. Item F, 405 Southeast 49th Street, where I said that be stricken, the owner has removed. Moving to page 11, under item 9H1B, 2033 Southeast 14th Street, where I said that be stricken, we need to re-notify. Item D, 1505 Northeast 19th, where I said that be stricken, the owner has secured. And item K, 2601 Southwest 56th Street, where I said that be stricken, the owner has secured. Moving to 9I1, item D, 2033 Northeast 14th, where I said that be stricken, we need to re-notify. Item F, 1505 Northeast 19th, we need to strike, the owner has secured. Item N, 405 Southeast 49th Street, where I said that be stricken, the owner has, has removed. And finally, 2601 Southwest 56th Street, where I said that be stricken, the owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we're on to item 6. This is, uh, vocal permits. We have a request from Arts Council of Oklahoma to hold the Festival of the Arts, and I know Peter DeLisi is here along with Gilbert. Why don't you all come up? How many years is this, Peter? How many years now have we had the Festival of the Arts now?
Well, this is the 49th year of the Festival of the Arts.
Wow.
And it actually starts two weeks from today. And what a great day this is to come before you, when we're honoring, uh, Councilman Ryan and talking about volunteerism, and just, what an exciting vibrant city we're living in. It's just amazing. I just love to be able to be a part of this, to come on mornings like this and talk to you a little bit about the Festival of the Arts and the Arts Council. We couldn't do our event without the 5,000 volunteers that work on Festival of the Arts every year. It truly is a community-wide celebration of spring and the celebration of the arts, and we couldn't do it without the incredible support of everyone around the horseshoe, and also the fantastic, uh, city management that you've got. We work with so many different departments within the city that help us, uh, day in and day out to make the festival safe and fun and inclusive of everyone in our community. So we really, really appreciate all the work that, that you do for us in the community. Thank you so much for that. I want to let you all meet Gilbert Magdaleno. Gilbert is a festival director. This is his first year as festival director. He's gonna say a little bit more about the festival.
All right. Um, I would just like to reiterate what Peter said. Um, we really couldn't do this without the support of the community and, uh, the city of Oklahoma City. Um, and so we would like to invite you to the opening ceremonies, which will hold on April 21st, which is a Tuesday, at 11:00 a.m. Immediately following will be our official's luncheon. Now you should have received an invitation. If not, you should receive one soon.
All right. Well, Gilbert, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate all the work of the volunteers. Please pass that along. It starts two weeks from today, that's April 21st, and it'll run through Sunday, and so that's what, the 25th?
26th.
20th, through April 26th?
Correct.
There'll be absolutely no rain this year and very pleasant temperatures.
I like to hear that.
Light, and light wind? And, uh, the, the art's fantastic, but some people go just for the food, and either way, uh, it's, it's a wonderful event, and, uh, I always like to remind people, it's the best bargain in town. It is free.
Correct.
And so, thank you for, for, in advance, for your work, and, uh, remind people that there's, you know, plenty of parking, uh, downtown on the weekends when you come down here, um, and I know the people that work downtown enjoy it, uh, you know, during the day, um, when, when it starts on Tuesday. Items from council, and comments from council?
I, I certainly would move approval. It's, uh, very exciting. I can't believe it's 49 years, Peter.
I can't believe it.
It's just thrilling. Looking forward to celebrating the 50th anniversary next year, but I, I did have a chance to serve on the food committee again this year, and I can assure you that the food is gonna be... you that the food is going to be great, really good selections. So move approval, please.
All right. Is there a second? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks and good luck. All right. All right, we'll reassess the council meeting, convene as Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes on the PPA. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene as Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and again, just the claims and payroll. Cast your votes on the EAT. It passes unanimously. Adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Are there any individual considerations?
Your Honor, a minor question on number 7R.2.
And Mayor, if I could just mention item 7E, please.
Okay.
And then Mayor, we do have a presentation on the intermodal model hub.
Okay. Well, why don't we have the presentation first?
Great. Anthony McDermer just here from TAP Architecture, and I think a couple of his friends.
Thank you, Mr. Count. We have a short presentation this morning, Mayor Cornet, City Council, on a very exciting project that will get started this year, the intermodal transportation hub. Many of you have seen a previous presentation of this project. This is the presentation of the preliminary report. Scott Parker is the project manager for this project. He has masterfully administrated a very, very large consultant team for what has been quite a complex, complicated project, both in terms of funding sources and in terms of scope. I will move quickly through the presentation, because I know you've got a lot of other business in front of you this morning. The background and status, I think most of you know that the intermodal hub is a repurposing of Santa Fe Depot, a 1930s facility that, on the east side of EK Gaylord. The status of the project right now is that we have completed the preliminary report. Is that the channel? Thank you. The project involves the expansion of the existing Santa Fe Station, historic rehab of that facility, upgrades for the Amtrak offices, and maybe most importantly, the concept underlying the building is to turn it into a revenue-producing property. Right now, as many of you know, Pinkitzel is the retail operator at the south end of the property, but it is our intention with this project to turn the rest of the station and the rest of the facility into a revenue-producing property. The transit portion, the intermodal portion, will involve bus, taxi, streetcar, train. We'll also make accommodation for cyclists and, of course, pedestrians. The connectivity that the project provides is to interrelate all these modes of transportation and also enhance the connectivity between downtown and Bricktown. Very quick...
Am I going the right way?
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. That's why Scott is here, to manage me. The report, the preliminary report, is completed. Final plan specifications are underway, and I'm going to go through a very, very quick overview of the project. Most of it is graphic, and then I'm going to hand off to Scott to talk about the project in a little more detail. The site plan, this is the overall site plan of the project with all of its phases. North is to your right. So you can see that the project not only entails the renovation of the historic Santa Fe Station, but also an enhancement of the public space on the west side of the elevated tracks between EK Gaylord, which again is going to be under Project 180. It will be enhanced and upgraded and put on a slight diet, which...
Narrowed, yeah. Narrowed.
Thank you.
Yeah, which is, I think it key, please.
Narrowed. The advantage, one of the advantages to our project, of course, is that it increases the distance between the street, the thoroughfare, and the front steps of the station. For those of you that are familiar with the project, you'll know that the front steps, the grand entrance, the west entrance to the Santa Fe Station, is perilously close to the street, and that's going to be remedied in Project 180. Along with that remedy comes the opportunity to completely revamp the public space with the west side of the tracks and make it obviously a more pedestrian-friendly place, a place that's a lot more conducive to other activities, other than surface parking right now. One of the most ambitious parts of the project is the continuation of the existing tunnel to the east, which would extend beneath the BNSF tracks into Bricktown. So this is a brand-new connection that's proposed and contemplated that would connect the Santa Fe Station to the west end of the existing Bricktown Canal. As many of you know, the west end of the Bricktown Canal is a somewhat dead zone right now. The connectivity between the upper level and the lower level is, well, it's nonexistent. So one of the things that this project will do is dramatically enhance the west end of the canal, will dramatically increase the connectivity between the upper levels and the lower levels, and activate and energize the west end of the canal, the existing canal, as well as provide this fabulous connection now between the Santa Fe Station amenity and Bricktown. A little more detail, this is the north end of the plaza on the west side of the elevated tracks, and you can see a new arrival court is planned. The public spaces all around the building are increased in size. One of the benefits of this project is that now you will be able to appreciate the Santa Fe Station in a whole new way. You're going to be able to see the station across a much more attractive public open space. We do retain some surface parking, obviously, here that serves the Amtrak passengers, but it is reduced. And also the drop-off, the drop-off is completely reconsidered so that it is a much clearer connection to the Amtrak train service, the Heartland Flyer. You can also see here in this diagram that bike parking that's provided at the bottom of the accessible ramp. This is the south end of that plaza, which is where Pinkitzel exists today. The idea for, as I said in my opening remarks, one of the overarching ideas behind this project is to repurpose the existing station and turn it into a revenue-producing property. We have got several ideas for that. The very south end of the plan here you'll see is shown as retail, that's Pinkitzel. The rest of the facility is dramatically underutilized at this point. And so one of the things this project intends to do is change that, and Scott will speak in a little more detail to that. This is the east side of the elevated tracks. This is a little more detail on the project that we call the Bricktown Plaza. This will be our, I'm quite proud of this accomplishment, actually, that Hershaw is the incredibly talented landscape firm out of Chicago that we have to thank for the Sandridge Commons. So if you know and you're familiar with the Sandridge Commons project, Hershaw was the landscape architect responsible for that project. I'm a huge fan of that project. I asked them to be on our team, and they have come up with some wonderful ideas for the creation of a brand-new public space that I think everybody will enjoy and appreciate for its beauty, but also for the way it dramatically enhances the way that you can move around at the west end of the canal, which is currently basically a dead end. Add to that the additional amenity of the tunnel and that connection to Santa Fe, and I think that you can appreciate the potential of this project to completely reinvent this entire area of town. This is one of our renderings that shows the Heartland Flyer up here on the elevated tracks, the accommodation of buses in the pull-out lanes, the plazas, the increased distance between the west steps of the Santa Fe Station and the reconfigured EK Gaylord. And again, another rendering that shows the new and reconsidered approach to the Amtrak Station. For those of you that have ridden the Heartland Flyer, you know that it's not a very well-identified way. There's not a very well-identified path to get to the Amtrak facility, and this project addresses that and gives us new signage, new canopies, and a new accessible ramp to get to the ticketing facilities. And again, a rendering of the new plaza on the Bricktown side shows the canopy that will be the protected, weather-protected entry to the new tunnel that goes under the tracks and connects to the Santa Fe, and also shows the monumental stair that dramatically connects the upper level to the lower level of the Bricktown Canal. Also, slightly shown here are the bridges that are also proposed that will bridge across from the tunnel connection to the upper Bricktown walkways. And then we also have a series of steps that connect the upper to the lower. So it's a dramatically enhanced way to get around the west end of the canal. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to talk a little more in detail about the interiors.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. I'll try to make this brief. So essentially, right now, it's an 18,000-square-foot facility. Pinkitzel occupies something like 4,500 or so. The rest is generally underutilized or unutilized, as is the case of the part in the middle that we're calling office. So essentially, we have set out a plan to utilize this space. We've set, or we've met with Amtrak two or three times to meet about their uses. When they use the building today, they unlock the entire facility. But really, they only need a small percentage of the facility. So we've shown it here in blue. The square footage has changed even slightly from this in later iterations, but they're going to need a lot less of the facility because their ridership is not such in this day or in this decade at all. But they would require the entire facility. So TAP has set out to assign different functions to different zones. We have a cafe space theoretically, we have a newsstand, and we have a space that can be used for restaurant use. We've had preliminary meetings with plan review to make sure that this can function as a mixed-use space. So again, part of our plan is to be very historically responsible to this great building and upgrade it and update it, but also give it the advantage of kind of operating in 2015, 2020, and beyond. So that's the general plan for the north. As we move to the south, the area that is shown in blue, the office space right now is, it has no improvements in it whatsoever, no air conditioning, nothing like that. So we will essentially make this ready to be used for an office tenant. Pinkitzel occupies the red portion in the south, and for our understanding, is generally understood to be, to stay in that location. This is a rendering of the concourse area, where we believe seats will be provided for users. This is a mixed-use space. It can be used by the restaurant. Amtrak users could sit here if they wanted. The cafe, you know, people could sit here if they wanted. So it's a mixed-use concourse space to allow more public interaction of it. Funding, I'm not going to go in in detail, but as you may know, the Tiger Grant is a multi-source funding engine for this project totaling the $28 million number.
I can highlight that just for a second. I think this is a real unique project, because we were able to take ACOG funds, ODOT funds, and combine that with city funds. And city funds in this instance included both Project 180 funds, which are TIF 8 funds, along with MAPS 3 funds on this. So there were really four revenue sources that we use as the match for the federal funds. And I don't ever remember anything that was quite this unique. Jane Abraham was the one who wrote this grant and put this plan together for us. It served very well, and I know Mayor Cornet, that Secretary Fox of the US Department of Transportation, this is one of his favorite projects.
Secretary Fox announced another round of Tiger Grants. I think it's pending congressional funding. But anyway, he highlighted this project to expose all the benefits of Tiger Grants across the country. So he chose our project to highlight amongst all the Tiger Grants that are out there across the country. So it's getting attention in Washington, too, of how transformational this new multimodal hub will be.
That is awesome. And we appreciate the opportunity to work on it and have this project. Again, more breakdown here that I won't go into. The schedule at this point is that it will go to bidding in the spring generally, that we will start construction in the summer of this year, 2015, and that construction will continue all the way to the fall of 2016 and be complete. Again, thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have just a couple of questions about the design. The first one is the stairwells that are in the tunnel that led to the tracks, are they going to be renovated, or elevators going to be put in for handicap, or that we're going to wait until we ever see if another train runs north and south besides the Flyer?
Okay. Councilman White, the, I think that was a three-part question. The stairs will remain substantially as they are, except that they will be renovated in terms of the nosings, but they are code-conformant right now. The elevator will be enhanced to be ADA compliant, they'll bring it up to code. So the existing elevator will be brought up to code. And was the other part of your question, additional stairs in the future?
Well, I think you've answered my basic questions in that regard. The other question was, at what level, I couldn't visualize the level that the tunnel comes out on the east side, on the Bricktown side.
That's a great question. There is an elevation change between the Bricktown side and the station side. It actually falls...
3.5 feet.
Approximately 3.5, 6 feet.
Right.
And there's a transition, a ramp transition, within the tunnel that takes up that place.
Could you put that schematic back up of the east side and just show me the, there, show me where on that the tunnel comes out?
Well, the tunnel, if you look at the canopy that's up against the wall, the wall represents the east side of the elevated tracks. And then the canopy that you see there, that entire glass facade is the widened entrance to the tunnel. So the tunnel flares out in plan, and it flares out in section, so it actually is a...
Actually, I would have thought it would have been lower than that, but it's hard to visualize it as you're in the tunnel, thinking where you're going to come out on the other side. But, okay, I see. Good. It really looks nice. I really like it.
Thank you.
Can you go back a couple, maybe one or two more slides, just that shows the Gaylord? I know this is outside the scope. Do you have a thought about whether there would be a median or no median on Gaylord, on our improvements?
You know, I appreciate you saying that that is outside our scope. That's kind of you. But Eric can talk to the, speak to the 180 improvements.
So I think I can answer on the Gaylord piece. And so we're actually looking at a couple of scenarios. This is a rendering that TAP did put together early in the process. We are actually looking at a mid-block crossing. It's hard to see in this rendering, but we would actually open up, if the median's provided, to do a mid-block crossing on Gaylord in front of the monumental or the historical entry to Santa Fe that would actually connect it to the Cox Convention Center. That's not shown here on this current plan, but we're also looking at the possible elimination of the median altogether. Now, what I will say is... Now, what we'll say is that we're looking at turn lanes at both ends, and so at Reno and at Sheridan, we're looking at left turn lanes. And so how we transition those lanes through that two-block section, we can either do that with leaving that hatched out, like with paint, or we can add in something more decorative like a median shown here. I think we'll probably have some partial medians, but not a full median all the way down the block.
Okay. All right. And are you going to, did I see, do you have a row of bay for, of charging for electric vehicles? Is that—
Yes. Actually, in the development of the design, the electric vehicles will probably be on the EK Gaylord side, but there are two charging stations in the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you.
It also looked like there were two smart car parking spaces in there.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second on the consent docket?
Yeah.
All right. Pat, do you have a question on R2? Do you want to make that before we vote?
Just a minor question. This is a landing fee calculation, and it says it was muted in accordance with established procedure or established process. Who established those processes?
We do locally. Mark Cranenberg, Airport's director. These are local calculations. Landing fees are based on the total cost of the airfield over a period of time, and that is divided by the total landed weight of all passenger and cargo carriers at the airport. We use that rate calculation, and this particular agreement, it goes to $2.91. We charge that $2.91 going forward for every 1,000 pounds of landed weight. It's a local calculation.
Local calculation. So it's established at bus level?
It is, and it's based on our operating expenses.
Is there any FAA input?
No, there's no input on this from FAA.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And Meg, you wanted to make a comment on E?
Yes, Mayor, if I could. I just, we had a presentation a week or two ago by Robbie Kinsel about the selection of the public art for the police headquarters building, and I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that this is actually the negotiation of the agreement with the artist for that piece of work.
All right.
Mayor, I have a question. It relates to public art. What happened to that statue that was downtown for so long of the steak? Where's it going to go eventually? The guy on the horse and the kid driving the steak and all that?
In Couch Park.
Is it on Couch Park? Is it still there?
Yeah.
Is it, is it going to be rehabilitated?
It's going to remain there, is my understanding.
Okay. And remain right there. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I've been advised that item 7Q2 is a duplicate. It's also on items for individual consideration, so we'd ask that 7Q2 be struck from the consent docket because it's on there twice.
All right. How about a motion to strike 7Q2? All right, let's vote on the strike. Item is struck from the agenda.
I'm a little disappointed Councilman Ryan hadn't picked up on that.
All right, now let's vote the consent docket. Cast your votes, and then consent docket passes unanimously. All right, just one item on the concurrence today. How about a motion on 8A? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9 begins a series of listings that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. If I recall correctly, 9A1 and 2 have both already been deferred until April 28.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're on to item 9A3, which has been deferred until April 21st, and that brings us to 9A4, which is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 401 West Memorial Road. It's currently C3, Community Commercial District, and it will become a new PUD if approved. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present?
Hi, good morning, councilmembers. My name is Josh Edge. I work with Dynamic Engineering. We are the civil engineer for this project and in this case, and I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have in regards to our—
Now, the purpose of this is to place a car dealership. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Now, I do have one question as it relates to lighting. Notice to the north of the site, you see residential houses. How would the light from the car dealership affect those houses, being that the land that you are proposing for the car dealership is lower than those houses right there?
Yes, sir. Very good question, and the way that we're going to accomplish no bleedover of our lighting onto the residential property is to make sure that all of our lighting is diverted into the property. We're going to make sure that our light does not exceed over the property line on the north side, and we're also going to use a lower wattage light on the backside of the property, which is adjacent to the residential subdivision.
Okay. Then my next question is relates to outdoor PA system. Can you explain?
They will not be allowed on this, this development.
Okay. Thank you. With that, say it, I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion on item 9A4.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I apparently mistook the city manager's instructions on continuing items. On 9A2, I said that item had been continued until April 28. It is not. Just 9A1 is continued. 9A2 is up for discussion today. It's a zoning case in Ward 2 at 2442 Northwest 39th Street. It's C3, Community Commercial, and it would become an R4, General Residential District. Ed?
And this is just to rebuild some apartments destroyed by fire. There was no protest. Unanimous approval with the planning commission. I move for approval.
All right. Comments or questions on 9A2? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Brings us down to 9A5. It's a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1201, let me say it again, 12101 North I-35 Service Road. It's currently inside of a simplified planned unit development district, and it would be a new SPOUD if approved. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up? Seeing that no one signed up, the planning commission did approve, so I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on 9A5. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B is also a zoning case in Ward 7. The address is 100 Northwest 114th Street. It's currently R1, Single Family Residential, and I-2, Moderate Industrial, and it would be a new SPOUD if approved. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see bypass.
The applicant called us about nine o'clock and said that he's not available and would like a one-week deferral on this case.
Well, it's complicated by the fact that we have a series of people that have shown up today and taken their time to come out in protest of this. Is that's all he said, is that he wasn't able to attend?
Yes.
All right. John, do you have any impression here?
Seeing that we do have protesters who have shown up, I think we probably should hear it, and I—
Yeah, why don't we hear from the protesters, and the council can decide whether or not we want to take action today or take a deferral. I have three people that have signed up to speak. Randall Shaddick?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry that he didn't request this earlier. I actually requested a continuance because I had a conflict that I would like to be at right now, but they would not request a continuance, and they show up here today and request it. I represent numerous landowners. My good friend, my client, probably a relative, Louis Dacal, who owns Dacal Auctioneers, abuts this property to the west. I also represent Freeman A1 Storage. Jim Freeman is here, Louis Dacal's here. They abut to the north, and then I represent Carl Zeiss and Zeiss Manufacturing, Jeremiah Graham, Carstar Collision, Easton Sod, all of which are south of this property. And then I provided city staff last night late a letter of protest from Bolt Construction, which is south of this, just north of Hefner, and from Scott Sabalich of Sabalich Prosthetics, all of whom object to this rezoning. And I'll speak for all of those, and then Louis and Jim may have something else to add. I'm also advised that Tom Brewer of Brewer Floor Covering opposes this rezoning. This is really a single-use SPOUD. This is an industrial, light industrial district. It's developed very nicely, and they are now coming in and asking on the frontage road for an entertainment venue. And if you look at what was in your packet, it looks like a gymnasium that basically serves alcohol. I don't know whether they've withdrawn their request for a stage, outdoor stage, on the west side adjacent to Dacal's property, but we certainly object to that concert facility. It is strictly a single-use facility, not in keeping with industrial of any kind, light industrial as this area has developed. So for that reason alone, it being incompatible with the surrounding uses that have been established for many years, we object. We all, all the individuals I introduced or represent oppose alcohol being served in any form at this location. I was trying to think where, from Memorial South to the Sixth Street exit, alcohol is served along Broadway. I may have missed one, but I can't think of a place that serves alcohol in that stretch of I-30, or Broadway. So we definitely oppose that. We oppose any electronic signs. I've not seen the new sign, if there is a new sign that they propose. They proposed a enormous electronic message sign, which appeared to me just to be an application for a sign at this location. We oppose that. There is a nonconforming billboard existing, an old one on the site, and it would remain a nonconforming sign, but we would oppose any new detached accessory or non-accessory signs. If there is a sign, it should be on the building only. And there also stated in their PUD or SPOUD application that they were requesting and had approval from ODOT for a second curb cut on the Broadway Extension Access Road. That is a one-way road. If you've been there going south, it's not a two-way access road. 114th accesses Freeman, and they also have a private drive, but it also accesses Dacal and the property to the west. It would access this property. They're claiming a curb cut to the south of their property. My client built that curb cut. Dacal built that curb cut. There is no public street there. It's a private drive, so they may have a curb cut on the second curb cut, but once they leave the public easement, the right-of-way, it's private drive, and they do not have permission to use that private driveway thereafter. So for those reasons, we specifically object to the SPOUD and this use at this location. If you were inclined to approve this, certainly we hope you don't, but if you were inclined to, then we would object to the fact that they don't require 70% masonry or brick or tilt-up on all four sides. I think the SPOUD still says they can have metal exterior on three sides and masonry on the front. We would object to a stockade fence. Planning commission required a six- or eight-foot fence separating this property from the Dacal property. We would object to stockade fence. I think we all know what happens to stockade over short periods of time. So, and we'd object to the outdoor stage. If you've seen this site, you also are aware that there's a huge drainage gully right through the middle of the property. All the drainage runs through this property. My client, Dacal, is in the process of redoing their drainage and detention on their property, and I think a drainage study needs to be done really before this zoning or any other zoning is approved to figure out how this property can be built because it is a major obstacle to development of the property, if you look at the floodplain as it cuts through this property. So for those reasons, I speak for all of the individuals and businesses that have been established for years on this stretch of Broadway, and we'd request that you deny this application.
All right.
Louis, do you have anything you want to—
Jim Freeman?
Mr. Freeman, anything you want to say? I do have Mr. Zeiss here and Jeremiah Graham, who's with the car.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I developed this property in 1985. I was privileged by lots from people that some of you know, the old timers. Mr. Garrett, I got to meet the father personally, B.C. Clark Jr., Mr. Clark's son, the Graham-Derry family, and so I bought these pieces. I petitioned the city and put in 114th Street to make it an idyllic construction area. And I sold Louis Dacal his property. When I sold it to him, I required that he put in a cement front and not metal, so Louis complied. Then I sold Mr. Steve's wholesale, the property behind, like 15 acres. And when I sold this to him, I had turned down a previous buyer that wanted to change his zoning to I-3, the concrete contractor you know, Mr. Matheny. That was a legitimate thing, so I wanted to try to keep the neighbors happy and keep it at I-2. And I operate a moving and storage company, North American Van Lines. We're their third-largest agent, also have an allied Van Line office, and I have 72-foot tractor-trailers that come to my property 24/7. They come from all over the country. We move people across the country, and I'm a packing-haul agent, so I'll go to Washington and move somebody to Miami. Well, they come Florida, they come through Oklahoma City. Anyone that's destined here, coming or going, come 24/7 to my property, utilize my place to park. So they'll be coming down 114th Street at night when this consideration zoning change property that you're considering would come. And Santa Fe dead ends at 115th Street when you are southmound, and they cut through my property all the time. So even though the city puts up sign, they do that because then it's a complicated traffic area, so they have to circle around to get on the frontage road on the Broadway Extension. So that's a problem. Also, when people come up 114th Street, I see them come up to 114th, and then they will turn the wrong way to get around going. They don't want to go all the way down the Broadway Extension and come back to 122nd. So they'll cheat. If you look at the diagram, they'll come up 114th Street, they'll turn north on a one-way street that's southmound, and they do it every day, and you see the fence knocked down all the time. So it would be a traffic issue, and I'm not opposed to someone wanting to do a good thing and develop something in Oklahoma City, but I am opposed to, I think, you wouldn't want me to put my trucking company in the medical park up the street, and it's about the same thing. People don't like my trucks because I've rented places before I started buying my properties, going back 30 years, 35, and people don't like trucks. Well, they are, you know, they cause congestion, and so, but these big tractor-trailers coming 24/7 would be a detriment to what's going on. So thank you for letting me speak, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim. Louis, you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. And John, Mr. Pettis, Councilman, thank you, representing us and everyone here, and congratulations on your retirement, Mr. Ryan. But when I bought this property from Mr. Freeman, it was I-2. I never dreamed that an alcohol establishment would go in front of us and be conformed and changed. I'm just worried about traffic. I'm worried about vandalism at night after 12:00. Every other week, you hear of a shooting or stabbing when alcohol happens. I know this, I don't mind anything that conforms to what everyone else is doing, but I've talked to Mr. Sollich, I've talked to Mr. Brewer, Mr. Zeiss, Jeremiah, Jeremiah Carstar, Mr. Freeman, everyone in this area. They're just, it's mind-boggling to us, and we're here to support the city. Whatever y'all decide is your business, but we do appreciate for letting us be able to tell you our side, and I just hope you take in deep consideration what everyone has said here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a little bit more complicated than our typical zoning case because we have a situation here where the zoning went through planning and passed, but there's significant protests. Over 60% of the surrounding neighbors have protested, and now we have an applicant that's not here today. So I don't know how it could be more complicated than all of that. I don't know that we have any choice other than to defer it a week. John, and just the fact that he's not here and it passed planning seems like there ought to be at least a courtesy for what might be a legitimate reason for not being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On last week, Mr. Shaddick did request for this to be deferred. The applicant refused to work with Mr. Shaddick. The simple fact that the applicant waited until 9:00 to call city staff, I think, shows disrespect to city staff and to the protesters. That's just me personally. That's just how I feel. Again, Mr. Shaddick, he did ask multiple times on— Again, Mr. Shattuck, he did ask multiple times on last week to have this item deferred, but it is the will of the council, so I look for input from the council, but for us deferring this, I, I, I just don't support deferring.
All right. Any other sentiment from council on a potential deferral here? Because it will take a motion to defer the item. All right. John, do you want to make a motion then on a, to approve or deny?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, around 4:00 PM, I had the opportunity, after picking up my niece from Millwood, to drive this particular site. One of the first things that popped out to, to me as we was driving down Hundred and Fourteenth and down the, the private driveway, private street that's gravel, was the huge drainage channel that exists on this property. I noticed from the Broadway Extension that the water comes down and a part of the drainage lends on this, on this property. That was one thing that popped out. And then the second thing that popped out was the simple fact that along the Broadway Extension, for its alcohol from, let's say, from northwest 50th, 235 to, till you get to Edmond, there is not one single alcohol establishment there. Beginning to, I think if we was to approve this, I think we'll see a whole lot of places who will want to serve alcohol along Broadway Extension, which I'm just simply not for. So, I'm just going to go on here and make the motion for, to deny this particular application.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. The motion is to deny the application. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. All right, we're on to item 9C. This is a cell tower request in Ward 7. The address is 10751 West Garnett. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
Seeing no one signed up, the planning commission did approve, so I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9C. Cast your votes, and that request is approved. Item 9D. Now, did this one get deferred?
Yes.
Okay. What is the new date, April 21st?
Right.
All right. 9D deferred until April 21st previously. 9E is a zoning case in Ward 8. This was recommended for denial at the planning level. We have one person that has signed up to speak, Pat. It is Jason Dunn. Jason? You want to hear from the, the, I guess, are you the, you're opposed?
Yes, Your Honor.
Pat, what's your preference here on who you want to hear from first?
I'll hear you.
Okay. Go ahead, Jason.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you. I'm here on my own behalf. I actually own a piece of property that is just northwest of the corner of the proposed area to be rezoned. I'm also here on behalf of the Antler Farms Home Association, which is a neighborhood directly above there. Those are houses on those streets that are reflected just north of the area to be proposed to be rezoned. Those are approximately between 30 and 40 homes on roughly an acre. It is significant, that north boundary of the, of the subject area to be rezoned is actually in the county unincorporated. This proposed rezoning subject property is in the very northern perimeter, the absolute northern perimeter of the city limits. As I mentioned, across that line is literally the unincorporated county. And in, in doing some reading up on the, this subject for this hearing, I came across a journal record article from October of 2014, in which it discusses the Plan OKC, which I believe the revisions or the, or the editing process of Plan OKC vision is discussed. And one of the primary focuses mentioned in this article of Plan OKC is to limit the amount of sprawl on the city perimeter limits. And it discusses the problems with the cost and expenses of infrastructure, schools, water service, utility service on the very perimeter of the city, the impact that has on the city, its taxpayers, its utilities, its infrastructure services, and the idea that there should simply not be increases in density because development is possible. I was present at the Planning Commission meeting, where the denial or the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of this property, and one of the basic reasons for that is this is a 74, actually just less than 74 acres. The rezoning proposal is to put between 300 and 600 homes on less than 74 acres. That's approximately four homes per acre. That is a dramatic change from not only the surrounding area, at least as it exists today, it's also a dramatic change from the, the character of the unincorporated county, which is literally just feet from the northern boundary of this proposed area. We're talking about an area of May and between 192nd Street and 206th Street. That's right at the boundary of these two transition areas. And so, a, as Plan OKC is represented, at least in the materials that I've been able to, to locate, one of the particular issues is this battle against sprawl on the perimeter of the city. And I would simply ask the council to consider, I don't understand how this could be considered anything but sprawl on the absolute perimeter of the city. You can't go any further north without being in the unincorporated county. You can't go any further north without being at the absolute limit of the city limits. You can't stretch infrastructure, services, utilities, any of that, any further north to the very city limit than you would be in, in this proposed development. It has been proposed and zoned. We understand, even those of us homeowners who would object to this proposed rezoning, we recognize that it has been zoned, we recognize that it will be developed. We simply ask that this council stick to the idea that an increase in density, simply because it, an increase in density can be accomplished, is not consistent with the interests of Plan OKC, the city, or any of the adjoining homeowners, whether they be in the city or in the unincorporated county that immediately adjoins this. And I would say, with respect to, I am here again on behalf of roughly 40 homeowners. Part of the reason I think there are not more people here to object is there are currently two huge sections of undeveloped land on both sides of this property, just within the city limits. There aren't homeowners to object to this proposed rezoning, because they simply don't exist yet. Those neighborhoods don't exist. The council's decision on this property will have a huge impact and a huge precedent on what is done with those remaining portions at the very northern perimeter of the city, as well as, I believe, the developers' tact in moving for rezoning of the immediately adjoining unincorporated county, which is primarily now only two-acre agricultural residential. There have been consist, or consistent proceedings before the Board of County Commissioners and its planning commission to rezone those portions of the unincorporated county. And while I recognize that is not this council's responsibility, I would caution the council that one of the consistent arguments made for the change in, in development in such a radical way is the area immediately south of it in the city is continuing to be improved, approved for more and more dense development. And so, I thank the council for its time, and I appreciate that. We would encourage the council to take the Planning Commission's denial under serious consideration, to follow that, and to stick with the, the vision of battling sprawl on the pretty, on the city perimeter. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
The applicant is here, and you're represented by council. David, you have anything to say?
Yes. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. And at the Planning Commission, there were a couple people there that spoke in protest, and we made ourselves available to meet with them, to understand what their concerns were. And what we did was, we had a conceptual map drawn up showing our lots and how they interact with the development to the north. And as you can see, there's a significant tree line that will remain, that will serve as a great buffer. And the individual that took us up on our offer to meet was satisfied, and that's why he's not here today. But when we look at the vision for the city, it's important, we look at what the comprehensive plan says, and the comprehensive plan wholeheartedly supports this development, and that's why staff recommends approval. This development is consistent with the surrounding zoning. It's consistent with even zoning in the county. Now, the individual that spoke, the quarter section immediately to the east of his development is currently zoned through the district court at 3.3 dwelling units per acre. The quarter section to east of that, also in the county, currently zoned 3.3 dwelling units per acre. So, what we have applied for here is consistent with zoning. It's less dense than zoning immediately to the east, immediately to the southeast of us, supported by the comprehensive plan, supported by your staff, and we would ask for your approval.
Are there any questions of, of?
Well, David, what, what is the density?
I'm sorry?
What is the density?
Well, in this zoning, it's R1ZL. What that allows are 4,000 square foot lots. What you have with R1ZL product is the front and side yard, or excuse me, front and rear yard setbacks are the same. Where they lose a lot is on the side yard. And so, what you have is a specific product that my client, Mr. Farzana, likes to, likes to produce. You have a lot of empty nesters and people who don't like big yards are buying these products. They still have the same amenities as any nice home would have. They're selling these in excess of $100 and $120 a square foot. What you have is a very nice, single-family home without a large yard. We have not gone through the plating process yet to know the exact density, but it's, it's somewhere around three to four dwelling units an acre. It's just those side yards where the difference comes.
And, I mean, the thing that strikes me, I mean, Jason was extremely articulate and convincing in, in some of the things he was saying, but, I mean, at the very bottom of this, I mean, this is changing an area that's R1 to R1ZL. You know, I mean, that's a slight, just a slight increase in density from what the zoning is now.
Correct.
And so, it, so I, I don't see this as a huge change of what somebody can already, already build there.
Typically, the concerns are when you're going from AA, where it's a five-acre minimum, to something like this. And like you said-
Let me ask staff, what would the difference in, in actual be? Can you give me an idea on the density difference in this, if this zoning change were approved?
The current zoning of R1 is seven units per acre. The R1ZL would be about 10 units per acre.
Okay.
But they really won't get that much because of streets and things, but that's what the zoning would allow.
I see.
Once the streets and infrastructure and common areas and everything, it doesn't allow, it won't play out to where it's 10.
Okay.
Any other questions, Your Honor?
No, I, my impression is that Jason Dunn would like to speak again. You stood up a while ago, Jason. Do you want to say something else?
Just ever so briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do think that it was important to advise the council that a group of homeowners association has actually gone to the district court to challenge what was at least preliminarily approved for the section that would actually be north, just northeast of this in the unincorporated county, on the basis of density. And I would suggest, if my math doesn't fail me from, with all due respect, the difference from seven homes per acre roughly at R1 to R1ZL, roughly 10 homes, is, if my math doesn't fail me, about three homes an acre. I realize you might not get that because of streets, but let's assume even you just get two acre, or two more homes per acre with that change, you're talking about 140 additional homes, if my math doesn't fail me, on less than 75 acres. We understand, the homeowners who object to this understand that land will be developed. We understand that it, that, that there is no way to prevent that from being developed. Developers have the right to buy land, develop it. The community generally benefits from that. But there should be a compelling reason for dramatically increasing, and I would submit that 140 more homes on 70, less than 75 acres is a dramatic increase. I don't think that the developer has presented any compelling reason to put 140 more homes on 75 acres. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I just ask one more question, Pat? In terms of the green belt that's proposed, how much acreage does that take out of the 74?
I, I don't know the exact number, because we haven't gone through the plating. Some of this green belt is not a part of this. It, it's actually going to be part of what will be developed as R1, and I'm not sure the exact acreage on this. We won't know till, till we get our-
Till you do the plating. It will have to be platted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And, and like I said, the difference on these R1ZL, a single-family lot in R1 can be 6,000 square feet. The minimum in the R1ZL is 4,000 square feet. And like I said, where that's made up is the, the smaller side yards typically. You're still going to have the same size house, and it's not going to be this dramatic increase of density. There's, you can see a sliver of R1ZL in the quarter section to the east, and the products really blend seamlessly between the R1 and the R1ZL.
All right. Ed, do you want to say something?
Yeah. Well, we've heard competing opinions about whether this is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and usually on the staff report, it, it goes into some explanation, but here it just says approved application. So, can I just hear from staff about whether you believe this does or doesn't, is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and, and what your thoughts on?
In our opinion, and I think the planning department's opinion as well, is this is consistent with the plan, because this is one of the areas in the outskirts of Oklahoma City that has already been provided with utility services and streets. Now, there are places that, you know, we would consider an increase like this not consistent with the comprehensive plan, but in this part of Oklahoma City, we don't believe that.
So, would it be in conformance with both the existing and the maybe soon-to-be adopted comprehensive plan, both?
Yes. This is an urban growth area, and that won't change. And a lot of that is because it's already developed, and like I said, the utilities and the street improvements are already existing here.
Can I, can I ask you, or Pat, or Pete, what is the water infrastructure like in this area?
I'm sorry, the water?
The water infrastructure.
The, the planning, the commission staff said there's adequate water supplies out there.
It's there.
Well, what school district is this in?
Deer Creek.
Why would you build product for empty nesters in Deer Creek?
Because it, it, there are that, my, my mother is an empty nester, and she lives in a, an area far north, and that's just an area where people want to be and want to live. Now, and I, I do think it's important, Councilman Shadid, you raised a good question, there, and there was some commentary by staff as it relates to the comprehensive plan, and I'll, I'll read from the staff report. R1ZL zoning allows, but does not require narrower lot widths than R1. Front and rear setbacks are the same, which creates opportunity for a mixture of lot sizes within a neighborhood, a goal of the comprehensive plan.
All right.
And that's why staff recommends approval.
All right. Well, we need to come to a conclusion here. Any other comments or questions over here?
May, may I have a question?
Yeah, sure, David.
Bob, excuse me, David, can you give us, I did not watch the planning commission meeting, so could you give us your interpretation as to why it was voted against approval?
The planning commission, a majority of the planning commission had concerns about the increase of density. They realized that it was zoned R1, which would allow the standard single-family development, but they weren't confident that a increase to the R1ZL would be appropriate here. It, it was really a, I mean, it was debated fairly strongly between the, at the commission meeting.
The other issue that came up was somebody asked if we would put it in a PUD, and we declined. And I, I made the comment at planning commission that not every case needs to be in a PUD. There are still areas where straight zoning is appropriate, and when you have a single-family use, that is one where straight zoning is appropriate. We're not mixing uses, we're not creating variances to the city code, we're going to meet everything within the city code, so a PUD isn't needed in this case.
I'm not as familiar with this part of the city, but when I have driven up there, it just seems like the development is, is at a very high pace. There is growth continuing all the way up, May Avenue, Pennsylvania Avenue. Is that, and so, this is, as, as Bob was saying, it is a high-growth area, I believe.
It is. You have, in fact, south of us, you've got two full sections by two different developers. You have The Grove, which is a, I think, 300-plus acre, single-family development. You have Valencia, which is east of May, which is another full-section development. And immediately east of this tract, going to the east for several quarter sections, you have active, single-family development. So, it is a very hot area for, for- So it is a very hot area for, for single-family development.
All right. Anybody else? Pat?
Mayor, I have a kind of a comment. Last ACOG meeting, we had a presentation with regard to what really is driving development on the outer fringe. And the conclusion was, and I think, I may ask that they come make a presentation to us because I found it really interesting. Their conclusion was, it's the, once the city provides services to an area that has a, one of the outlying school districts, then it's going to happen. It's kind of a combination of the school district being out there and then us providing through our policy with regard to water and sewer.
I would agree with that.
Once it gets out there. And so it's one of the things we don't really consider much, it seems to me, when we talk about it. I don't know how the planning commission considered this, but we look at where this growth occurs, you look at the growth in Ward 7, it's all along that Edwin School District area. That's where it's, that's growing. You look here, it's all on that Deer Creek area. You look to the west, it's along the Yukon area. And we're facilitating that. We talk about, on one hand, that we want better inner-city schools, and yet we're facilitating that flight away from the inner-city schools to this area. I mean, that may be what we want, but at this point, I'd consider it to be kind of an unexpected consequence of that. When you get, I suspect that if you would take water to 192nd and Hera Road, you'd see people building houses out there. And we've decided not to do that in one part of Oklahoma City, and we've decided to do it in spades in another part. And I think it's, if that's what we want to do, we ought to, we ought to make a decision and publicly say that's what we want to do. But after watching this presentation, it's really interesting when you watch the migration of populations. And it is, it's not toward the edge, it's towards school districts. That's what drives it. And that's a comment not meant to influence this decision one way or another, but I do think it might be well to see that study.
Yeah, why don't you?
At a council meeting, at the tail end of a council meeting.
May I just speak directly to that point? And I'm sorry to delay this presentation at the expense of David and your client, but I think Pete raises a good point, and we've not done anything to try to promote or assist development within the inner-city part, other than midtown and the downtown. An area I'm thinking about is something like the Wheeler District, and if that gets established, then I would hope developers would begin to look at the success hopefully that one will have, and see similar type of developments. I mean, this is exactly the type of development we need surrounding an area like the Wheeler District and without the commitment from developers to make that kind of investment in the inner-city. The hope for the Oklahoma City Public School District's success, I think, is going to be limited.
Okay, yep.
Well, I just, I mean, it might have been debated strongly, but it looks like it was essentially unanimous at the planning commission to deny it. I mean, I just, I don't know if we're going to do this over and over. It seems like when we develop our new, this may be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, but I can't believe that this isn't sprawl, and it's not going to eventually have all the economic consequences that we talked about during the comprehensive plan. So I'm just, I'm a little bit confused that this would be in compliance with the next comprehensive plan. And it just seems like there's a.
Oh, in compliance with the current plan, but maybe not the next one. Just a guess.
Right. And, but, I mean, the planning commission seems almost unanimously, I think there was one, the vote seven to one against.
My guess is, though, this is one of those zoning cases that, based on the circumstances, might be very difficult for the city to defend it in an island court.
Right.
Even though we may, even though the planning commission doesn't like it, recently, they have liked a lot of things that are not consistent with what, I mean, this, as David mentioned, they started, they insist on PUDs because of the contract zoning nature of a PUD. But that, but developers aren't required to use PUDs. I mean, that's, that's just a, and that got caught up in this denial, in my estimation, that argument between whether they can force a PUD on you or not. Again, that's, those are policy questions, but I think they're certainly worth, this is as good a time as any to at least think about them.
Yeah, I think we're all thinking about it. We kind of need to move on.
I'd like to make a motion to get this thing moving. I'd move for approval.
All right. There's a motion in a second on the floor. Did you want to say something before we vote?
I was just going to say, part of the issue here is this is just 80 acres, the last 80 acres in Oklahoma City at this location. As the applicant said, everything south of 192nd is already developed, standard, single-family, or platted for standard, single-family. So with the existing R1 zoning in this last 80 acres on the north, this part of our city boundary, it wouldn't make sense to, or in staff's opinion, it, you know, it made sense to allow a minor increase in density because it's already zoned R1.
Okay, thank you. Motion in a second on the floor. Any more comments from council before we vote? All right, the motion is to approve the zoning request. Cast your votes. Item 9E2 has been deferred until April 14th. Item 9E3 is a zoning case in Ward 8. The address is 4237 West Memorial Road. Pat, we have one person that has signed up to speak. Michael Laird? I doubt Michael's a protester.
No.
You're the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so no protesters have signed up to.
Are there any questions of the applicant here? Well, this unfortunately seemed like a situation where the planning commission got focused in on one aspect of this project that was not key to the major source of, major project itself, and they voted against it just to slow it thing down. And I don't believe that was the proper approach. There was very little discussion about the project itself, more about a sign that was adjacent to the project that belonged to the same property owner. I would move for approval on this item.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is anyone here hoping to speak on item 9E3?
Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant, I just want to clarify, the TE number four that's in the staff report would need to be deleted. Thank you.
None from me.
I would move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9E3. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. 9F would create a parking spot in Ward 2. Ed?
I move for approval.
Okay. Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience on 9F? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. 9G passes unanimously. 9H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? All right, how about a motion then?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. 9H passes unanimously. And 9I is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Did anyone come today hoping to speak under 9I? All right, how about a motion here?
Move the item.
Cast your votes. And 9I passes unanimously. 9J, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would be in order?
Move the strike.
Cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item 9K, I understand we do need executive session. All right, how about a motion to move 9K to executive session?
Move the executive session.
Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 9L is claims recommended for denial. Is anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9L? All right, how about a motion?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes. Those claims are denied. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is anyone here to speak under any item listed under 10A?
Move the item.
Is there a second on 10A?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll go on to items from council. James, do you have anything today? All right, Ed, Larry?
I'd just like to thank the residents of Meridian Hills for their neighborhood meeting last Thursday night, the hospitality displayed for Jolene and I, and like to encourage neighborhoods all around. There are a number of neighborhoods, not only in Ward 3, but around, that are starting neighborhood meetings, to encourage the neighbors to get out and get involved and do an act of kindness, do an act of service, and move Oklahoma City forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Larry. Pete?
Growing up in South Oklahoma City, I had the real privilege of watching a number of really great high school athletes in the 50s when I was growing up, and three of them really stand out in my mind. A guy named Clinton Thomas, who later played in the National Football League, and Brewster Hobby, who hit probably the longest homerun I ever saw in my life. And, but the one, one person in that decade stood out as an unbelievable athlete. His name's Chuck Page. He passed away this weekend. He was, he was all-state in three sports. He was an All-American, fast-pitch softball player after signing with the Dodgers and throwing his arm out after he reached double-A or triple-A. Quarterback, University of Central Oklahoma, Central State football team. He was just, he was on the list of the Daily Oklahoman's Best High School Athletes of the Century in 99 or 2000. His passing is huge for South Oklahoma City sports. I mean, there's, and he was, he coached Little League sports. I think somebody told me that he had seven consecutive years of Little League football without a loss as a coach. His son, Randy, took, I believe it was Central State University at that time, to the national championship later. I mean, just, he just was, it was a phenomenal athlete and very devout Christian. I just, I'm not sure what I would like to do to recognize that.
Well, I think you've done a lot. You've drawn attention.
But he just, he will leave a void in, in South Oklahoma City. He was a very, very remarkable person.
Thanks, Pete. David?
Well, just through a few more accolades for Chuck, and I think we all want to express our condolences to the family of Chuck Page. Chuck only lost one game in high school as a pitcher. He was the Player of the Year by the Daily Oklahoman for football, and then that spring, he became the Player of the Year in baseball. He won five state championships while at Capitol Hill. But his contribution to South Oklahoma City, that was the starting point. He really was a very solid citizen, great community leader, and we are really going to miss Chuck. And I know for all the Capitol Hill alum, we really do have a sense of loss with the passing of Chuck. Thank you.
Meg?
If I could, I just want to follow on Larry's comments about the Oklahoma Standard. I had the opportunity to take my office staff yesterday. We closed the office early and spent two and a half hours at the memorial and visiting all the upgrades that they've done. It's an amazing place, and, you know, I see you wearing your band.
No, I was just looking at it.
I've got mine on, too.
The bands are like this. They were handing them out at the Thunder game this weekend.
And they are available for sale at the museum as well. But it was, for my group, we were downtown 20 years ago. Our office was at 7th and Broadway, and out of my seven, I had four employees who were directly impacted either with the loss of an extended family member or actually had debris blast into their car. It was a really powerful day, and I just would like to encourage everybody to take the opportunity to go back. If you haven't been before, go. If you have been before, please go back and see. You know, the story is so expanded now with the telling of the trial, and we've got so much more material than we had when the museum originally opened, and it's just a, it's a really valuable experience for people to share.
John? All right, Pat, final comments?
Thank you. I just make a final comment to thank all the people for all the support I have had during this last 10-year period. And I would be remiss if I, by the name of all, because I know I would miss somebody, but I want to thank my constituents for their constant supervision of my activities, for my colleagues for keeping me on a straight track when I got, my knees are still bruised from, you want one of your predecessors kicking me, may I say, stuff. And then I would also like to thank the city staff. They've been outstanding in help. They've been very supportive, and I never had a chance to ask a question that wasn't, didn't get a good answer. So I do appreciate all that. And with that, I'd like to say goodbye and good luck to all of you. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat. Oh, we have a city manager presentation on the Bricktown rebranding.
We do. Jane Jenkins is here from DOKC to tell us about what's going on in Bricktown with her rebranding.
Thank you, mayors, members of the city council. Last Friday, we launched a new brand for Bricktown. It's been, you know, many years, and Bricktown has changed a lot. And when I, I came to Oklahoma City in 2009, and I watched some pretty quick changes the first two or three years that I was here, but Bricktown didn't change very much. But its day was coming. And in the last 18 months, Bricktown has changed a great deal. We have more hotels. We have the construction of Brickopolis. We've had some property change hands. We've got Tapstone Energy building their headquarters and bringing lots of employees to Bricktown. And most important, we lost CityWalk. I think that's probably one of the biggest changes to happen in Bricktown in a long time. And we wanted to make sure that people understood that Bricktown was safe, that Bricktown was for families, that it was still Oklahoma City's premier entertainment district, but it needed an update and a fresh look. So we know that people know Bricktown in Oklahoma City, so instead of saying, "Welcome to Bricktown," although that's our website, we want to welcome people back to Bricktown by updating our look. So this is our new mark for Bricktown. It was done with funnel design, but if you've ever worked on a design, logo, branding process, you know that it's not, it's much more complex than that. They looked at several different physical attributes of Bricktown, including using the bricks. And if you see in the triangle, excuse me, the diamond shape, which is also prevalent throughout Bricktown and some of the masonry, the interior bricks form a B. The Bricktown name is a customized font, and with the nodes on the end meant to reflect the B inside of the, of the brick mark. And we also took into account, you may know that we have signs on the railroad overpasses that announce that you're going into Bricktown. Those are, you know, pretty significant investments on our behalf for acknowledging Bricktown, so we did not necessarily want to have to replace those. So the designer took into consideration updating our font, giving us a new look while still having something that would be complementary with, with the font that's there so we can use it. And of course, recognizing that Bricktown is a part of downtown Oklahoma City and that it's one of the first districts in Oklahoma, that it was established in 1898. Do I, okay. That's just the mark itself, and you can see how it can be used. I don't know how the colors are showing up on your monitor. It just kind of looks gray to me, but, out here, but, but we can use that on its own or, next slide. These are some applications. On the left are the pole banners in downtown, excuse me, in Bricktown, and those went up this weekend, so those are up now along Sheridan, and some on Mickey Mantle, and a few on Reno. We've reserved some to maybe do some things with a sponsor or an event, but, and there's still a couple of Chevy banners that are up that we could not get to because of construction. So they will come down once the, once the constructions allows us to get in there, but really promoting Bricktown. And the image on my right is, is our new district signage. Many of you know that in all the downtown districts, we have district identifiers, and the ones on Bricktown, in Bricktown, were really getting kind of faded. Some of them had lost their lettering, and so these will all be replaced with this district signage. It's really unusual, and I'm going to tell you, it was kind of a feat of engineering to figure out how we were going to hang them, but I think it will be very distinctive and very fun for Bricktown. It's, okay, this is how we can apply the logo. Again, I can't see it very well from where I am. Again, I can't see it very well from where I am out here, but it's kind of like if you did a print ad, you can use that B to overlay on images. This would be something like for a visitor magazine or print advertising. The next one? These are our T-shirts, and this one's a little bit easier for me to read in terms of using that brand as an overlay, just showing the various different applications that we can get from using this mark. This is one of my favorites. We're going to put these, the image on my left is, we're going to do window clings that businesses can put into their windows so that they can identify themselves as being part of Bricktown. And then my favorite on the right is a ghost type of sign that we're going to find an appropriate brick wall and paint a ghost sign with the new logo on Bricktown, and just really try to get everyone in the district to buy into this image. I mentioned that this is an important time for a rebrand and a refresh, and it's not just about the logo, it's about the promise, it's about the experience, it's about what's going to happen when you get to Bricktown. And thank you, council members, because you just helped us out by voting some TIF money to make some much-needed improvements to the Bricktown infrastructure. These are some of the improvements that are on tap. Some of them TIF, some of them Bricktown Association, some of them Parks Department. But we're going to do some landscaping upgrades and maintenance. We have new district markers, some public art, repair of pavers and stairs, much, much needed. Repainting of the Bricktown canal railing, again, has not been painted since the 90s. Removal of the gas lamps, which for so many years were such an identifier for Bricktown, but have fallen into disrepair and are just prohibitively expensive to try to maintain. And there's really no point in having them there if they're not going to work and we can't maintain them, and people vandalize them. And then some elevator repairs to help make the district more user-friendly. Downtown Oklahoma City has been working with Bricktown for many years, but just 18 months ago, we signed a management agreement where we actually have management contract with the Bricktown Association to be a little bit more involved in Bricktown, and it has just been very rewarding, I think, for the Bricktown Association and for OKC to see the phenomenal changes in attitude, in brand. We do events there. We do Rock the Boat. When we did Rock the Boat last year, we're going to be doing it again this year, it was one of the most diverse crowds that I've seen at a downtown event, and we want to continue to try to celebrate that diversity in Bricktown and really make Bricktown the district for everyone in Oklahoma City.
And Jane, just to point out that we did a presentation on some of the improvements last week. I know you're doing some things on top of that, but we are doing some improvements to the canal and some of those things that needed to be done, that are improvements that need to be updated. But the rebranding of Bricktown is paid for by the Bricktown Association, which is funded by the property owners of Bricktown.
Yes, I'm sorry. The rebranding process was paid for by the Bricktown Association, and, which is paid for by the Bricktown property owners and businesses with some assistance from the bid, OKC. Like a lot of things that we do, it's a partnership effort, and so this is one of those partnerships.
Any comments or questions for Jane? Who did the rebranding? Who actually?
Oh, it was funnel design. They're a design firm in Automobile Alley, yeah, downtown.
And baseball season starts Thursday night?
Baseball season starts Thursday night. Yes, it does, and we're real excited about that. So, thank you.
I really appreciate that you anticipated my question about the signage on the railroad bridges. Those were big projects.
Well, that was, yeah, those were big projects, and that was a huge part of what we do. We knew that we did not have the resources to replace those signs, and so we had to have a new look and a new font, but it had to be compatible with what we already had up there in terms of infrastructure.
Great decision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Citizens to be heard. We have two people that have signed up to speak. I'll ask them that they keep their comments to three minutes. Harry Burns Jr. Morning. Harry, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes. My name is Harry Burns Jr. Address is 1622 Northwest 3rd Street, Midtown area. Yes, sir, and city council. I have come before you today to tell you my mother passed a year ago, and she owned 14 homes in the Midtown District. And I've just now gotten over my depression, near it the best I possibly can. Good things are happening. I have triplets on the way. What I want to do today, I want to talk to you about buying those homes, properly purchasing them from me, and if there's any way I can work with you. There'll be clearing court and a probate on the 21st of this month. My brother and sister have already agreed to allow me to sell prior to eminent domain, please. I have a short speech here. I now come to not only talk about African-Americans, but a prominent African-American woman whose prestige and virtues will have supported our community at its lowest point that it is strengthening today. My mother, Ms. Marjorie Gray. Many spoke of what she has done as a legacy. I myself see it, as I was there from the beginning, as an empowerment of the impoverished. Her work turning older homes into lavish boarding homes with country in qualities and all of the amenities. She even provided meals, each room TV, radio, AC, antique storage, refrigerator, et cetera. All you need is $20 each day and never worry about a bill. Yes, I have never, I have heard of the Marriott and various hotel chains, but I have also heard of the Jesus House, Mission, Day Shelter, Pastor Carter's, Guild of St. George, Cross and Crown, Salvation Army, and the Goodwill. These are but only a few of OKC's loving patrons of good-hearted people who not only give to our fair city, but have proven enduring strength, and I honor each of them with an applauding decadent thank you. It is true, all the homes but for one or two had been vacant, dilapidated eyesores. But through her diligence and strong will, life was restored to a dying, if not already dead, structure. Taxes now bound as incoming revenue for the city. For the ones whom use our before-mentioned facilities have a chance to rise to a state of mind that they are not lowly but true citizens. She gave constant encouragement, instilling in them an aspect that was missing, enthusiasm for life. Just one talk with her, and you know that you can do better. She did her own security work, the no-drug policy was reinforced on a day-and-night standard. Wet eviction notice. Simply stated, get your stuff and move around. Oh, don't get me wrong, she was tough. How do you care for the less fortunate and be a pushover? Believe me, bullets have flown, pistol whippings have taken place. This is moving material, and I have many stories to tell. I began here so you have a table of content to go by.
Harry, I'm confused. What are you trying to accomplish?
Well, I want to explain what my mother did for the city. For 22 years, she cared for the less fortunate, helped them. I was just about to.
And what's, yeah, it's a fascinating story, but what's happening to her property?
Well, I've had to shut them all down. I've been, I've cut them off. Something moved in called a juggalo. I talked to an impact officer, and it's a gang, and he explained all this stuff to me, and it's dealing with a lot of mess, and so to save myself a lot of trouble here, I simply shut them down. And my mother told me not to sell to anyone but the city for many years. That's why she stayed there, and she continued utilizing her environment to maintain the properties, and it worked out well. But when she passed, things would arrive.
Well, who owns them now?
I do.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Me and my wife.
So you're looking at doing something positive with these properties, and you're asking us to help you?
If possible, or if eminent domain is coming, then we can work with that.
Would eminent domain be heading in this direction?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, we don't have any reason.
We generally just don't, we don't buy property from property owners for general reasons.
Yeah, but you should talk to someone in our planning department. There might be a program available that might help you with all of your good intentions in turning those into more valuable and to useful properties. So who should you talk to in planning?
Well, we'll start with Aubrey.
Okay. If you'll step outside, we'll have someone in the planning department meet you out there, and they can start you in the process of getting you some information about what you might want to do next.
Okay, well, thank you. I didn't mean to take your time with excess, but I wanted to let you know my mother did do some good work here.
Well, and I'd love to see her legacy continue with you being a good steward of those properties.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you very much. Esteemed city council, you have a good day.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Sarge Nelson?
I'm Joe Sarge Nelson. I've been here numerous times. I owe city manager an apology, and the council as well. I said I was going to try to be here on an upbeat version and quit biting my gums. But I had to break my word, and I called him yesterday and told him exactly that and apologized for that. I have four things I'd like to say right briefly about your election. Congratulations. Saw Mr. Pete White's comment in the paper, Mr. Greenwell, McSallyer, Mr. Ryan, sorry to see you leave. And all the credits you got, you should have got a lot more. And I do mean that sincerely. I'm here today, and I usually normally read everything I do, but today I'm not going to read anything. I'm going to tell you right from the gut just exactly what I think. First off, a few weeks back, the Hotel and Convention Center we were talking about, and it also came out on the little docket, so to speak, in reference to new sites like the Cox Convention Center and this and that, what have you. And yesterday, I got a little disturbed when I pulled out the article where the city's putting, the Urban Renewal Authority is going to purchase land or condemn it and then put eminent domain in it, and then put a half a billion dollars into building something that we don't really even need. We've got nine downtown anyway that's never up to 30% capacity to begin with. We're ready. We've been ready for a long time. We've got some of the best motels and hotels downtown Oklahoma City, period. And then on top of that, March 15th on Gwynne Faulkner Show, and excuse the way I put this, but like I said, I'm going to be direct. Your mouthpiece, Jeff Vesdick, needs to be put in a closet somewhere, pointing the finger at a man that's not even here to defend himself. It's not my idea of good politics. And when you jump all over Russ Claus, that was a bad mistake to make. And he said that he was the blame because all of the changes being made to the street car. I was under the impression the street car was a done deal. Voted for last year, the Zeta Route, the whole bit. I even bought a nice big colored poster. Remember Mr. Mayor called it mixed folly? Well, if it's a done deal, why are we changing it all over again? More millions. If we started off with 97 million, now we're into the triple-digit million bracket. I don't understand where all this stuff's going. Then McSallyer come up here just a few weeks ago, and I don't recall if y'all remember this, but seven or eight years ago, y'all talked about a Ferris wheel. The city was invested in buying a Ferris wheel in California, bringing it to Oklahoma City, putting it in a fair park. Couple of weeks ago, it came up that our esteemed former mayor, Mr. Kirk Humphreys, is purchasing a Ferris wheel and bringing it to the airpark in Oklahoma City. Now, if he owns the airpark, which I'm assuming that he does, a lot of stuff has been said about that, I brought up a lot of times about what's our helicopters doing on his property? Do we own the property, or are we leasing it? And if we are, why is the mayor collecting more money on all the other projects he owns downtown? And Mr. Jordan will remember this, and you all will, too. I'm sure you all remember Moshe Tao and all battles he put on. If you'll notice, I was one of the defendants that put up a large amount of money to fight a lot of people, including Hogan and a few others. I'm one of those old boys that I get into the game, but I get my facts straight, and I've told you all before, and I'll say it again. I'll never bring anything before the city hall and speak about it if I hadn't got something in black and white to support it. Now Kirk Humphreys, right in this building, threatened to break every bone in my body. In time, I got left and went back to the job I had, which was downtown under a former Secretary of State. I wrote him a nice letter and asked him to repeat it outright out on 200 North Walker. I never got a reply. I saw him one other time when him and Senator Nichols was getting ready, he was getting ready to run for Congress, but he didn't listen to Nichols then either, and then he let his pick in his mouth overload his bulldog, you-know-what, and he lost the election. Now, my thing is like here, if that's the same Ferris wheel that he's bringing in that the city's got, what's it doing going down on his property if Oklahoma City bought it? Now, I have some comments about that. Now, I'm going to check into this. I've got a couple investigators I'm going to talk to when I leave here. Now.
Final comments, Joe?
I know, that's about the end of it, but I just want to let you all know, I did break my word, and so you all know that I wasn't joking. All these articles I just spoke about came right out of the Daily Oklahoman. At least I do have one ally in that sense. And I've told you all this before, I will only come down here to try to do the complimentary things. When there's something bad, I'm going to address the thing. And I would like an answer to that Ferris wheel, and I'll be here next Tuesday, and it shouldn't be that hard to find. Thank you all.
Thanks, Joe. We have executive session. We'll be back.